I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Boulder Valley School District. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Sis.
Here.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn the introductions over to you, Dr. Anderson, and we'll get started. I apologize for the little bit of a delayed start.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, members of the Board. Very excited for our work session today where we're going to be talking about culturally, linguistically diverse education and bilingual education. Board members, as you know, last year we reorganized the district as we thought about some of the areas we needed to focus on specifically as a school district in relation to achievement gaps. At that time, we reorganized and appointed Dr. Nativity Miller as Assistant Superintendent of Opportunity and Access. We heard from her at our last board meeting around a special education update, and so I'm excited to introduce Nativity again to talk to us tonight about CLDE and bilingual education. So with that, Dr. Miller, you're up.
All right. Good evening, President Gephardt, members of the Board, Dr. Anderson. I'm super excited to be here this evening. I would like to just also introduce, I have Kristin Nelson Steinoff here. She is our Director of CLDE and has supported me and our team through this process that we're going to talk about today. So, thank you. Today's presentation is in direct alignment of the strategic plan. At the beginning of the year, Dr. Anderson and I engaged in a discussion about CLDE, and at that time, I was asked to take a deep dive into the CLD department and specifically what programming we're providing to our emerging bilinguals, what the data says in such programming, what gaps exist, and how we're supporting our quality instruction for our emerging bilinguals. The process did take a little longer than anticipated. We took it, but we took a significant amount of time to look into each school, the data trends, past program reviews and practices, and align that to the research that we know is best practice. The CLDE department, in collaboration with schools over the years, have implemented a variety of instructional opportunities for our emerging bilinguals, yet due to COVID and home learning, there has been some pause in professional learning and programming. So today, I'm going to share with you the themes and recommendations that we've identified with our internal CLDE assessment in order to begin planning and implementing strategies to improve our instructional practices. Before we launch into the review, I would like to provide an overview of CLDE by the numbers that we currently have in BVSD. We have four school-wide co-teaching models currently at Emerald Sanchez Eisenhower and Community Montessori. 100% of our teaching staff at Pioneer, University Hill, and Columbine are CLD endorsed and function as well as ELD teachers. In our dual-language schools, we have two at Pioneer and University Hill. We have two strands at our middle schools, Manhattan and Casey, and we have one at Columbine with a transitional late exit program. We have 60.54 ELD teachers in our NBVSD, and we have 4.3 itinerant teacher coaches. Those coaches are housed at the district level under the CLD department, and they support our schools that do not have dual-language programs or ELD programs. So at the beginning of this year, as I stated, we did a CLDE, what we are calling an internal assessment. Our initial assessment entailed reviewing the data trends and alignment to the programming in each school. We looked at the achievement gaps and identified that while our emerging bilinguals are continuing to make growth on our access language acquisition tests, we continue to see gaps in achievement and our growth data throughout the district. We also reviewed programming in our ELD and dual-language programming schools and identified that we do have some inconsistencies in programming models and therefore creating a need to revisit best practices and reviewing our school models that we provide to our students. Based on our initial CLDE assessment of services of our emerging bilingual students, we have identified four areas in which we recommend to be the priority for our district in creating greater opportunity and access and providing instructional best practices to our students. They are English Language Development Programming, specifically implementation of a co-teaching model for our non-dual-language schools, and the utilization, continued utilization of our itinerant coaching model for our schools with a lower number of emerging bilinguals. Tool two, a review of our dual-language programming and support of their continued growth and development in alignment to the dual-language best practices. Three, increase our K-12 pathways for our students in Boulder and East County. And four, our secondary course options, working with our secondary schools to increase instructional support for emerging bilinguals by creating course options that provide appropriate instructional support through our ELD course options, as well as creating more opportunity and access for heritage Spanish courses. And I will talk through each of those priorities. So our priority number one recommendation is the co-teaching and itinerant coaching model. Based on the review of our first priority, or I'm sorry, we would like, what we want to provide our emerging bilinguals in our non-dual-language schools, either the co-teaching model or the itinerant coaching model. The co-teaching model consists of the ELD teacher working in a general education teacher classroom and providing instruction together with the classroom teacher during content instruction. The itinerant coaching model consists of our district ELD certified coaches who got, get assigned school, a school, a school or schools, working with students and coaching general education teachers in ELD best practices. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what co-teaching is so that we, I have a solid understanding, you have a solid understanding of what we're recommending for our schools. Co-teaching instruction provides our emerging bilingual students with an inclusive service that provides access to grade-level standards and peer language models without pulling our students out of the classroom for ELD instruction. In a co-teaching model, the ELD teacher and the general education teacher collaborate and they co-plan instruction, identifying the needs and best practices, strategies for emerging bilinguals when they're teaching content. It has the potential to bring, build capacity of our classroom teachers as the ELD teacher brings expertise to incorporate explicit language development that supports instruction and assessment. The classroom teacher maintains the strategies and supports our emerging bilinguals throughout the day, thus ensuring that our students have access to classroom instruction regardless of whether their ELD teacher is present or not. As mentioned, the itinerant coaching model also will provide a similar structure with the ELD coach teacher from the district. We want to provide our emerging bilingual students who are in our non-dual-language schools the means to remain inclusive in their classrooms, be provided content that is on grade level with scaffolded language supports and with educators who understand language acquisition. We believe that implementation of the co-teaching model for ELD instruction can provide just that, and therefore, we are recommending that our next steps are to systematize and increase the number of co-teaching schools in our system. Our recommendation for co-teaching and the itinerant coaching is based on our current allocation of English Language Development staffing and at our, at our non-dual-language schools. So our recommendation is as follows. Our elementary schools who receive a full-time English Language Development teacher and have 30 or more emerging bilinguals will continue as a co-teaching school or begin the implementation of co-teaching to serve our ELD students. Schools who have an identified 15 to 29 emerging bilingual students will work with our district CLDE team in collaboration with our school executive directors and identify if they will implement a school-based co-teaching model or work with our district itinerant coaches. Schools with 1 to 14 emerging bilinguals will continue working with our district-based ELD itinerant coaches with English Language Development instruction and consultation. General education teachers will also have an increased opportunity to have professional learning in language acquisition and best practices for ELD instruction. We believe that the co-teaching model is one of the best practices that provides our emerging bilingual students with access to grade-level standards and peer language models, again, without pulling them out of the classroom. Therefore, our proposed timeline is as follows. Currently, we have four schools engaging in the model as evidenced by Cohort One. Yet, again, due to home learning and COVID prevented some of this work and some professional learning that goes with co-teaching, therefore, we're proposing that our CLDE team support Cohort One with a relaunch of the best practices through professional learning and feedback loops beginning in the fall of 2022. In Cohort Two, there are an additional eight schools that have 30 or more emerging bilinguals that we would recommend begin the preparation process for launching a co-teaching model with the implementation launching in the fall of 2023. Recently, as Assistant Superintendent, I've met with the principals in this cohort of schools and began discussing options for implementation, as well as areas for support and any barriers that we need to address. Schools that fall in Cohort Three and Four would choose to begin their preparation for the co-teaching model or work with our department on the utilization of the district itinerant coach. In this model, schools would be assigned the district itinerant coach to provide the co-teaching and provide the general educator support and, and instruction in ELD best practices and skill identification. Cohort Five will continue their implementation of the itinerant teacher coaching model with an increased focus on the consultation and feedback process through more consistent and timely work, I'm sorry, more consistent and timely work with the general education teacher, as well as an opportunity, again, to engage in more professional learning around language acquisition to help drive and provide focus for this coaching model. Through the implementation timeline, we would be providing a co-teaching model for schools with higher numbers of emerging bilinguals while also providing ongoing coaching for our district coaches to schools that have lower numbers. Creating a more systematic approach to serve our emerging bilinguals also provides our CLDE team a systematic way to support ongoing professional learning, feedback, and a means to measure, measure growth in alignment to specific programming. Emerald Elementary was one of our first schools to implement the co-teaching model, and we're pleased to share some of their testimonials. From Principal Samara Williams, "We love the English Language Development Co-Taught-Co-Planned Model for so many reasons. Most importantly, we're seeing a positive impact in student outcomes in our access testing for emerging bilinguals in our ELD program. In addition, the model is inclusionary. No pullouts from the regular classroom. It builds capacity for teachers because the ELD teachers learn from the classroom teachers and vice versa, and it ensures high rigorous grade-level expectations for all students, especially the emerging bilinguals." And from second-grade teacher Jody Hostetter, "I love the co-teaching with the ELD team for multiple reasons. Most notably, I believe that there has been a significant growth with my emerging bilinguals over the last years in both writing and English language development. Additionally, I think this model has been incredibly instrumental in the growth of my native language speakers. I attribute the success to structured weekly collaboration, planning time which combines the expertise of Ling, English Language Development, Special Education, and General Education, as well as having two or more teachers at a time with cohesive goals and solid chemistry. I never want to teach writing or ELD any other way." All right. Our priority two recommendation is our dual-language programming. Currently, currently in BVSD, we are fortunate and proud to offer three elementary dual-language schools, as well as two middle-level programs. At a time when many other districts across our country are no longer supporting this type of programming or access for our emerging bilingual students, we are very grateful that BVSD continues to support such programming. The current state and fidelity of our programming is different in each of our schools, and we acknowledge that we not only need to increase our native Spanish speaker enrollment, we also recognize that we need to improve student outcomes in bilingualism, biliteracy, and multiculturalism. We are committed to reviewing and studying effective dual-language schools that are meeting the goals of bilingualism, biliteracy, and multiculturalism so that we can continue to grow our own programs in BVSD. Therefore, our next steps for this priority is to evaluate and monitor the programming for each of these schools. We want to emphasize that while the dual-language models may be different in each of the schools, our goal is for all three of them to be consistently aligned to the guiding principles for dual-language education. We are committed to regrounding the vision and goals that are focused on bilingualism, biliteracy, and socioculture competence, and realigning to the models as they were intended to be delivered with solid theory and best practices so that our programs are enriching and not remedial for our students. We believe that refining our dual-language programming at this time is essential for our growth and our development. We're committed to not only gaining insight from experts in the field, we are also committed to community stakeholder input from our teachers, parents, students, and community partners. Our goals for improving programming for our dual-language schools is a top priority, and therefore, we will begin a needs assessment this fall 2022 with timely implementation of the recommendations. Our priority three recommendation is expanding our K-12 bilingual pathways for our students. We are committed to increasing opportunities for our students and acknowledge that dual-language programs lead to higher student outcomes when they are provided for students for a period of time that allows for them to reach native-like proficiency and grade-level achievement in both languages. We are excited to share that we are currently reviewing options to expand our dual-language middle-school programming, and we are committed to providing these opportunities in both Boulder and East County. And our final recommendation, priority four, is the recommendation is the continued implementation of high-school ELD courses and working to increase our heritage Spanish courses. While we currently have several CLD, CLDE ASC courses for our high-school English Language Development students already in place, we are committed to their continuation and improvement with the implementation. Currently, we offer the following courses. Newcomer ELD and Newcomer Content Language Development. Intro and Explore. Application and Transition. Each course is designed to teach students in the development of speaking, listening, reading, and writing, while also providing support for conversational and academic English with additional skill development with technology, as well as preparation for post-secondary ed and career planning. These courses were developed using high-school language arts standards, and therefore, students can count these courses as language arts credit and therefore still have access to elective courses. Additionally, we offer a senior seminar course. The senior seminar course is designed for the 12th-grade students to assist them in completing the CLDE capstone pathway. All the work that students complete in this course should be rooted in the perspective of ethnic studies so that students may continue to build pride and efficacy in their identity as an emerging bilingual. The area for us for next steps is to continue to refine the courses described for our ELD students and begin implementation of heritage Spanish courses in our secondary schools. The purpose of such courses is to enable those our heritage language in Spanish to continue developing, maintaining language, and enhancing proficiency in Spanish by providing an opportunity for our students to listen, speak, read, and write in a variety of contexts. Currently, we have Spanish Language Arts courses in many of our high schools, yet we need to make adaptations so that all students have experiences in their bilingual development with the addition of more courses. We will begin collaboration with our secondary principals this fall 2022. So in closing and to summarize the recommendations, they are as follows. One, relaunching our current co-teaching schools with new professional learning this fall 2022. Two, begin planning for new co-teaching schools and increase our district itinerant coaching and consult models beginning in the fall of 2022 with new cohorts beginning in fall 2023. Three, engage in consultation process with a needs assessment of our dual-language schools beginning in the fall of 2022. Expanding our K-12 bilingual pathways with an initial step of adding a middle-level dual-language option in East County with planning and stakeholder input beginning in fall of 2022. And finally, improving high-school ELD courses and increasing heritage language course options with planning beginning in fall of 2022. So the work of our department is vital in supporting our schools with programming, resources, and implementation and feedback. We have improvements to make, but we are committed to making those for our students, our staff, and our families so that we can continue to provide access for high-quality programs and instruction, as well as the preservation of language and culture. With that, thank you very much, and I have a question.
Beth?
I feel like there'll probably be a lot of questions. Nativity, thank you so much for that.
That's all right.
Was that me?
Both flags, right?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, yeah. Good, good eye. First of all, thank you so much for that presentation. We have, as you obviously know, a great deal of community interest in this topic. And one of the things I heard you highlight that I want to dig a little bit deeper in is the community stakeholder engagement process, both for the dual-language schools, as well as the expansion of our K-12 pathways. Can you just tell us a bit what that, a bit more about what the community engagement and stakeholder process will look like so that community members know where they can get involved?
Yeah, so we, we believe that we'll start that process this fall with looking at our options in East County on where the best place for that programming would be, and then based on that work with the, the leader that is in place and the schools and talk about what that looks like for staffing. But we also need to look at getting parent input, what our parent is interested in terms of the type of programming, as well as any stakeholders that we want to partner with that can help us launch this. It's going to be one of our bigger projects to implement, but we're, we're ready. Our team is so eager to get started, and I believe we'll create a consistent, a process in collaboration with my supervisors on, on how that will, that will look.
That's incredibly exciting. Thank you.
And I think there's space for board member input on this as well in regards to what that engagement might, might look like. I'd like to thank the, the numerous members of the community that have been emailing us this week with their enthusiasm around what we're, what we're planning, although they didn't know some of the things that were going to be in the presentation. So hopefully, this presentation, we've been, you know, meeting expectations. But I think as we think about engaging community, that's going to be a really important part of this process, and we want to make sure that we get this right. And so I believe that there is some space. So Beth, to answer your question, I don't know that we have fully cooked out the, the engagement process, what that would look like, so we can begin to kind of mold and shape what that would look like as we get ready for that engagement in the fall.
I think that's great, and I'm, I'm sure you guys will keep us and the community apprised of what the, the plan is, just so people know where they can engage.
Richard?
Muchisimas gracias, Doctora Miller. Thank you very much. I am very, very happy to see that we got this off the ground, and you've done a lot of work. But I do have a number of questions, okay? I want to go back to the co-teaching model. You know, we have Emerald Sanchez and which one, which was the other?
Eisenhower and Community Montessori.
And, and they currently have cohorts going, and they're going to get more cohorts and stuff like that. I guess the question that I have and a concern that I have basically is, as we're trying to get more schools to develop the co-teaching model, and we know we have children in those schools already, what's going on with those kids in those particular settings currently? Is, are we using a pullout model for those particular children at this point? And, and how quickly can we get that going? Because I'm really concerned that these particular children are really missing out a lot, okay?
Yeah. So when we did our analyzing of what types of programming were happening in schools, we did have some pullout. Lots of models of push-in, where we're having like a flooding model during literacy and the ELD teacher is coming in. We do have some schools where there is a co-teaching model, just not K through five. So when I met with all principals in that, that cohort of the eight schools, they are ready. They're primed and they are ready, and they, they know this is the right work, and they've asked for my support with Kristin's team. We've also identified some barriers, and, and we're working, we will continue to work on that this spring so that we can get going. So they are getting provided service. To be fully transparent, it's in a variety of forms. Some of it is push-in, some of it is a flooding model, and some of it is pull-out.
Thank you for the answer. I, I was fortunate to visit Emerald pre-pandemic, and I saw the co-teaching model at Emerald. And a couple of questions that arise, not because of my observation, but because I'm looking at Emerald. Do we have one teacher assigned to do co-teaching at Emerald? Do we have a number of teachers? How does that work? I'm, I'm trying to understand that because we do have multiple grade levels, okay? And I think I was observing the kindergarten classroom where I saw the teacher reading to the children, they were sitting in their circle. Some of the kids that were English Language learners, I would assume, were like outside the parameter of the circle, and the co-teacher was sitting there, but I didn't see a whole lot of interaction, okay? But could you explain to me if there's one co-teacher or if there's a multiple co-teachers? Because we have multiple grade levels, and how does that work?
Yeah, so at a school, there are some organizational structures that principals have to put in place, and that's usually a staggered time. So for example, at Emerald, they do the co-teaching model during their writing content. Therefore, kindergarten through fifth grade writing time is all different so that the teacher can go to first, go to second, go to third, go to fourth, go to fifth. So they typically schedule the day that way so that a teacher can go to all grade levels.
So it would be, I guess, in, would it cover all content area, like, like math and, and all of those different skills that kids need as they're moving up to grade levels?
It does not cover all content areas typically because you're looking at one or two ELD teachers, but they choose a content area. I think what we've seen in some of the co-planning and co-conversations that teachers are having is what's happening is we're building the capacity of our general education classroom teachers, and therefore, they're able to utilize those strategies outside of the time that the ELD teacher is present.
Thank you very much. And then going to the dual-language, can I have more time? Force my, thank you. Going to the dual-language slide where we, where you talk about the, that we have three dual-language schools. I know two of them, I don't know the third one. Which one is the third one?
I think we're talking about Columbine as our late-exit transitional model.
Okay. But it's not dual-language?
Correct.
Not the way we see dual-language, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and then the, and then we're talking about the two middle schools that have bilingual ed, some sort of bilingual ed. Could you explain what they actually do at the middle school level?
Yeah, so they're, they're dual-language strands, and Kristin, you may have a better idea, but they're, they're courses that students take in our middle level. We also know that we have some work to do there as well, to look at master scheduling and see how we can provide more access. That's sort of our next bucket that we'll be working on. We actually have a planning day already on the calendar to work through that, but I don't know if Kristin, you wouldn't mind? don't know if Kristin, you wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about that?
Sure. Currently at Casey, students have the opportunity to take Spanish language arts. They also have the opportunity to take social studies in Spanish.
Thanks.
And they have baile as well as one of the electives.
That was the last one?
Baile.
Okay.
Donde son bailes? They dance. They, they have a folkloric dance that, that is offered as well by one of our bilingual educators. And so all of that is conducted in Spanish. So that's at Casey. At Manhattan, students are taking a Spanish language arts class at each of the grade levels, and they are also given two years of social studies. And then we found a science teacher who is bilingual, who is doing science for them as well over at Manhattan.
Thank you. The, children from Pioneer are being bused to Manhattan. And, you know, I've been reading all the different emails that we've been getting, and, and, you know, parents, families, they're, they're appreciating very much the opportunity that the district has provided to them to do that. Now, I kept hearing comments also, or reading comments, that it's those that can and those that can't are not getting that opportunity. I'm not sure how accurate that is. Could you explain that in terms of the transportation piece? I mean, do, do we have sufficient transportation to get all the kids that would like to take classes at Manhattan, to get to Manhattan?
Yes, we have sufficient transportation. Some of the feedback that we've heard is that it is a struggle for students who are being transported. For example, if there is an illness and they need to be picked up, the distance that it is for some families is hard, is a hardship for some of our families. That's just one example we've heard, but the opportunity is there with the busing, but our families would prefer and would like something that's closer, near Pioneer in East County.
Thank you so much again. The, and I know that in our emails that we're getting back and forth, you know, we keep talking about a P-12 pathway, and I know that you touched a little bit about heritage Spanish, et cetera, et cetera. I've been thinking about this for a long time, you know, and, and, and I'm thinking about, wow, you know, we were able to get engineering classes in high schools, we were able to get IB classes in high schools, we were able to get a lot of different sorts of opportunities like that in, in high schools. And I was thinking, wow, you know, if we can do it with IB and we can do it in engineering, we can certainly do it with bilingual, okay? So I'm hoping that all of those considerations are being taken, looking into account. Platt choice, for example, at the middle school level, they have Platt choice, and I know Platt choice very well because my kids went through Platt choice. Wonderful opportunity. I could see at a middle school, a, a middle school choice bilingual, you know, sort of just thinking that up here. But anyway, I want to thank you very much for, for what you're doing and the work that you've put into it and your team. But are we looking at doing something, actually an implementation or installation of a bilingual pathway in 2023? Is that what I'm saying?
So our goal, one of our top priorities is that we start that process this fall 2022, and hopefully, we believe that in a year with a lot of hard work, that we can get it up and going in the following year of fall 2023. And I have, we, our team feels so fortunate, to be honest, that we are under Dr. Anderson's leadership, not just because he's sitting here, but, and Dr. De La Cruz, but we have, we now feel, our, our team feels, well, this is my first year in this position, our team feels like we have the runway to do it, and they're ready. They have been waiting for these moments to do it, and so we are ready to go.
And, and the community is waiting.
Yes, they are, absolutely.
I'm telling you, the community is anxious to get this going and get it done, and I truly appreciate it. And as far as Dr. Anderson, let me tell you, he's a bold leader. And when I say bold leader, I'm saying that he's bold because he does not maintain status quo, okay? Whereas other superintendents that I know, they call themselves bold, but they're maintaining status quo, and that's not bold at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Richard?
Get your rep, really.
Lisa?
So when we're talking about implementing things in 2023, I guess I want more clarity about what it is that we imagine we'll be able to implement then. Are we talking about having three or maybe four K5s that are all operating on a 50/50 model?
So for dual-language specifically or for the co-teaching?
For dual-language.
For dual-language, what we're looking to do is, we don't necessarily think we either have to have a full, all, everybody has to be 50/50 or 90/10. What we do want to, is we can honor a 50/50 and a 90/10. We need to get closer to our pillars of dual-language and make sure that our programs, that we're true to the program. So if it is a 50/50 model, that we're staying true to what the 50/50 looks like, and if it's a 90/10 model, that we're staying true to what the 90/10 model looks like.
And at Columbine, are we looking at moving to a 50/50 or a 90/10?
What we're, what we want to do is get our input from our experts and take their recommendations and sit down with Principal Bianca and, and talk to the staff and see what the recommendations are so that we can create a pathway for them.
I mean, I think my concern around that is it feels like we just finished doing that at Columbine and ended up in the same place we started. So are we going to redo this process and end up someplace new?
So if I can chime in, I, I think that as we think about the work that Kristin's been doing for years, and Dr. Miller has, has helped lead this year, we're taking a systematic approach, right? You know, so as, as we think about how BVSD has evolved, right, there are certain areas where autonomy is appropriate, and we try to protect that and honor that, and other areas when we have big visions, that we have to create some direction, right? And so in this instance, Lisa, the last time that this happened in Columbine, the school was empowered individually to make that decision individually. But now, our goal is to bring in some evaluation based on the goals of the district and implement a district implementation. With certainly feedback and with community members and so on and so forth, but it's not going to be in isolation without our input and leadership around the program.
Okay, I'll take that for now. And then are we looking at adding another bilingual K5 in East County?
I think we're going to wait to the feedback to see what that would look like. I know that we are focused, our efforts, and I'll, Dr. Miller, I'll let Dr. Miller address this, if I get this wrong, our efforts are really around this 6, 8, and 9, 12 support in programming. But as we get, if there's interest, and, and as we, as we hear from our community and others, we're certain, certainly open to that. As, as the board will, will know, and as the community hopefully will learn to know, this is one of the four pillars of Grad Plus, right, where we really believe in, in the value of bilingual education and being bilingual as a true value add when kids graduate from BVSD, in addition to having an industry certification or having, earning college credit or getting these really meaningful work-based experiences. And so to the extent that we can continue to grow and evolve these based on interest, I think that'd be something we'd want to do.
Okay, I mean, I do want to talk more about 6, 8, and 9, 12, but when I'm looking at things here, I see needs assessment of current dual-language schools and expansion in 6, 12, and no conversation about Sanchez. So I guess I'm specifically wondering whether that's something that we'll be looking at.
I don't think that within this evaluation that, that there is a specific look at Sanchez. I think we look at the programming as a whole, as a district, not in individual schools. We have a lot of really deep work happening at Sanchez through our partnership with UVA, and we feel like that's working and that's, and that's being successful. I always had the opportunity with one of my school visits to spend a few hours there a few weeks ago and feel like things are, are really going well. But I would say that, you know, part of this evaluation isn't to evaluate whether Sanchez should be a bilingual school or not. I think we would engage the community at large and kind of see where, see where the interests might lie and what that might happen.
Okay. When we're looking at our dual-language schools and our expansion in East County with 6, 8, are we looking at enhancing and improving the programming at Manhattan and Casey? And when we're looking in East County, are we looking at a full bilingual middle school program? Or are we looking at something that's a bit more piecemeal, like what we have right now in Boulder?
Yeah, so for, yes, our evaluation is going to include Casey and Manhattan, and also we've asked a rec, for them to review sort of how we function as a CLDE team as a district to support our schools in the best way possible. So it would include our dual-language schools as well as Casey and Manhattan. And then the other question is, can you repeat that second part that?
When we're looking at adding a middle-level dual-language option in East County, is that going to be a comprehensive option like we have K5, or is that going to be a few classes scattered throughout a middle school?
I think we're looking again at what are our options, and we'll take, getting stakeholder input with both our communities and our partners to see what is in the community and then develop our programming from there.
So we're not saying that in 2023, we will be starting a comprehensive K-12 model in Boulder and in East County that allow folks to go from kindergarten to 12 doing bilingual programming. We're saying we're going to do a needs assessment and then something will change. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, I think that it takes time to do this well, right? And as, as anxious as folks are, and we certainly feel that, and are trying to, to do this in a systemic way so we're successful, I think that you have to, have to evolve into that. So, you know, I think that the big piece is our community parent engagement. I mean, we've made the commitment, right? We've planted a flag in the ground that this is something we're going to do. The pace and cadence is important. And so, and so we, we need to do the engagement, we need to bring in some, some, some outside expertise to consult on, on what works, and it might be different, and I don't know this, if you have a 90/10 model or a 50/50 model, or, or if you have something different, what the middle-level programming might look like could be different, right? And it could be, you evolve it through cohorts if you want to grow slower, because if you're growing a program in middle school, if they haven't had the programming in sixth grade, it's tough to jump into the programming in seventh grade and eighth grade. Now, I don't know. I mean, we're going to bring in experts to do that. What I've seen work is that you evolve cohorts in, and so the graduating fifth graders from Pioneer or, or Columbine or Uni Hill would have this sixth-grade experience that dovetails to the experience that they had in fifth grade, so you have continuity. But again, I mean, that, we're going to bring in experts and expertise to think about that. But I don't want to overpromise, right? I know folks are anxious, and I know that a lot of people want all these changes as of yesterday. We're committed to doing it right, and it's going to take some time. I have full confidence in our team, I understand the needs in our community, and I know this is good for kids. And so we just have to make sure that we pace this in, in the right ways so we can be successful.
Well, I know I've been talking for a while, so I'll stop, but I, I guess I do just want to say that I appreciate the idea of using a model where we're working with the community and experts to figure out what we need, but I also think our community has been exceedingly clear about what it is that they need and what it is that they want, and I hope that sooner rather than later, we can deliver to them a clear timeline for what a meaningful K-12 comprehensive bilingual education would look like, both in Boulder and in East County.
Nicole?
I want to second Lisa's final comments there about being really clear on a timeline for these folks that have been providing input for quite some time in multiple different ways and, and making sure whatever engagement we have with people that have already been having these conversations is really clear and authentic. Couple of questions I have, in the face of declining enrollment, how easy is it for us to switch between a 50/50, 90/10 model if our enrollment trends shift in a way where 50/50 or 90/10 no longer become attainable? And my second question, well, actually, I'll stop and I'll let you answer that first question.
Yeah. That is a concern of ours, and that's something I know Kristin has brought to my attention as increase, specifically increase our, our number of native Spanish speakers. And so we've talked a little bit about how can we market our dual-language programming as a benefit in our district, and how can we get that information out to the community so that we can pull in enrollment for our programming? So we need to get that back kind of ongoing with promotion of that and the benefits that it brings to kids. So I think that's one thing. I think, yeah, we're, we're going to have to really monitor what that looks like. I don't, with, again, we're not looking to say everybody has to be a 50/50 or a 90/10. We want to take the information from our experts and see what current models we have and get realigned to what they, what they are doing now.
And then if we're hoping to market and increase participation, transportation really, again, comes to the forefront of how are we doing that in a way that is equitable? And making sure folks, if they're open enrolling out of their neighborhood school for these programs that we're trying to fill, particularly our families that maybe can't afford to leave work around bell times are getting their students to those schools. And, and can we, do we have the capacity to make a long-term commitment to those families if, should they open enroll to those schools? You know, it's not a question we can answer right now, but I mean, something we, I hope we're being very thoughtful about.
Well, I think what you're, what you're alluding to is some overlap to our declining enrollment conversation, right? Where programming matters and programming, and, and we have programs right now, choice programs in the district that we provide transportation and others we don't, right? And I think that those are all the things that we're going to have to evaluate, right? So again, as we engage community, that, that's going to be helpful as we gain expertise and as we have this declining enrollment, parallel conversation around declining enrollment. If, 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 we just have to see what the barriers would be for kids to participate in the program. I would say that with this program, you know, similar to how I answered Lisa's question, you know, you cohort kids through. So if there's shifts or adjustments based on new, more kids or less kids, right, it wouldn't impact the kids already committed to the program. It would commit, you know, you, you would, you'd cohort the kids through, right? So if there's some significant change in any programming, you'd start a kindergarten, then kindergarten first, kindergarten first, second. So they get this consistent experience and we're able to keep our promises. So, but, you know, two big conversations, I think there is overlap, and, and, you know, a dual-language program as part of the efforts to think about stabilization of enrollment is certainly something that, that could be on the table.
And then one last question. You keep alluding to outside experts, and at our budget presentation, we had a line item for a Harvard residency. Is that the same thing? And if so, can you please expand upon that since that was never made clear last week?
Sure, sure. Right now in the preliminary budget, we have two investments that, that, that we've pushed forward for, for approval from the board as we think about the budget. The first would be a line item of $20,000 to bring in, to do an RFP, to bring in some expertise to do, do some of the evaluation of that process. In addition, we're looking into, enter into a partnership with, with Harvard to bring in one of their doctoral students as a Harvard resident where we split the salary, we don't, so you don't pay full salary. And then that person would be reporting to Dr. Miller and then really helping lead the engagement efforts, really help understanding the programming with the, with the doctoral dissertation being aligned to the successful implementation of this program.
Thanks.
I just, one more thing. I'm thinking about Columbine again, and I think one of the things that happened last time when we went through this process is that perhaps there wasn't enough outreach and communication with the parent community about the different models that we offer and what those things mean. So I wonder if as part of this process, when we're looking at our different kinds of stakeholder engagement, if we can commit to making sure that all of our stakeholder groups, but especially our families, have an opportunity to really be educated on these different models, the different things available, and that we have multiple pathways for them to engage back with us about what it is they want to hear, including standards around best practices.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I would say that district process versus a school-based process are going to be different, and we're certainly going to make sure we cover those things.
Just, just a couple of things. One is, dual-language immersion is pretty much settled science. As far as I know of research, all the research that I know has it as a settled science and, especially the 50/50 model. And then if we look at our own two schools, three schools, we know that one particular school is doing very well, okay? And I'm not going to mention names at this point, but we know that one particular school is doing very well, while the other two are, are struggling somewhat, you know, and those are the UVA schools. And so I think, I think we have sufficient information already to make determinations in terms of models that we can, that we could use. And, and then we also have, you know, when we're talking about experts, we have the Bueno Center sitting in our backyard at CU that are experts. They've been doing this work forever, you know, and they have tons of information that they can help us with as it relates to bilingual education. So I'm hoping that we're, we'll, we'll take the Bueno Center into consideration when we're looking at experts, and I know you will. So, but I, I do know that, that I, I feel like we have sufficient information already available to us as it relates to what models are actually working better than others, okay? The other is the timeline, you know? When I said 2023, I thought, well, 2023, I guess, you know, that's pretty cool, you know, to have the PK-12 system already in place by 2023. But it doesn't seem like it at this point now. I'm getting a little bit more concerned now in terms of when will we actually have something? And, and I am anxious for our team here to get that process really going and really being very, very clear. clear and concise and precise to our community as relates to what our process is and, you know, according to their expectations. I, there's a lot of expectations out there in the community right now, okay, as it relates to bilingual, it's, it's attracted so much attention that, wow, I'm just blown over in terms of the attention. And, you know, I don't want to, well, I, I'll let the committee, once they start going and stakeholder group meet, and, and I know if there's Boulder, Board, Board of Education opportunities for, for inputting and stuff like that, I'm more than happy to do that too. But, but I do think that we need more bilingual schools than ever, you know, especially with, with what we're looking at in terms of making sure that our kids graduate bilingual. We need that. We need, we need more, yeah.
And real quick, just clarity on the, the needs assessment for the dual language schools. Our goal for, we don't, we haven't identified who that will be, like Dr. Anderson said, we have the RFPs out, but our deadline for them to give us that information is Thanksgiving, because what we want to be able to do is start acting on the recommendations before January.
That's another question, because I'm worried that the engagement piece might be perceived as delaying this process for those that, that have been engaged for a while. And I wonder how, if you have a plan for frequency of updates to the public or to some of our stakeholder groups that currently exist, like Equity Council and Capple, as we're getting these RFPs back and, and kind of really being very clear and transparent throughout that process, have we thought through, hearing now that the deadline is November, when are we going to, you know, provide feedback to the community? And then what is, being very, very clear about those next steps to our, our groups that currently exist and any stakeholder group that may be formed throughout this process?
I, I think that's a really great idea. I think that, and I think it's important as well, right? I think that to be, to be able to clearly articulate, articulate, not like to articulate, where we are, what we're planning on doing, what we're learning, right? Like, so just to be clear, we, we, we still need process so we can ensure that we get this right. And, you know, the process includes opinion, right, expertise, our data, right, and then the capacity within our organization to move forward at a pace that is going to allow these things to work and work well. So it's all of that. And, and I just think that process is incredibly important, but we're not creating a process to stop progress. We are going to progress, and I just want to be really clear about that. There are times when folks, you know, throw process in the way of progress. That's not what we're doing. We really need to listen and hear and understand. I mean, we have some challenges. We need more native speakers to make our, our programs work and be effective and rich with, with, with students. And so we're going to have to talk to parents about that, because parents are going to have to pick these programs. And, you know, we have, you know, the issue, you know, with Manhattan, like, so we have some things that we have to work through. I just want to be really clear, board members and to the public, that we are progressing. This is happening. It's going to happen. We just want to make sure that we don't go too fast, that we, that, and if we, if we cut corners and we skip important steps of the process, then we're excited to have the ribbon cutting on a new school or a new program, and kids never showed up. I just think that we want to be careful around that.
I just have a couple of quick comments. I would echo what Richard said. I don't, I hope we'll look at CU before we decide we have to go to Harvard, because I think we have some good local scholars. And so I just would love to know kind of what the thinking was behind doing that, because I think we have some great people who have focused on Colorado and on those issues. So I'm just curious about that. And then, secondly, I totally support the idea of this assessment, because we can't stand something up between now and September. And I think the worst thing that would happen to our community is we stand something up that's not really thought, well thought out. And we really do need to have a better understanding of what the needs are out there, because we don't know right now. I mean, we are getting some emails that are supportive, but you can't build a program off of some emails that come in. So while I appreciate the support that we're getting that way, I really think it's important that we, as Nicole said, in a declining enrollment situation, and a budget shrinking, and all of the obstacles that we're going to be facing going forward, that we build something that's sustainable and that meets the needs of the community as identified by the community. So, and I appreciate what you said about process, because, I mean, I've not ever heard anything other than a commitment to this, but we just need to make sure what that looks like and how it fits within our budget. So thank you for all of the hard work that you guys have done, and thanks for the thoughtful questions. And I think, as Nicole said, you know, periodic updates for the community, I think are going to be really important. I have one other quick question that came up. On the Seal of Bilinguality, I don't know if those standards are set by the state or if we have any flexibility, because one of the questions that came up is if you're a native speaker, a heritage speaker, but you can't take like the Level Five AP class, do you not get the Seal of Bilinguality? I mean, is there flexibility in making sure? It looks like you're nodding on that one, because that's a question that came up, and I wasn't sure how to answer that.
Got it. Yes. So the state legislature passed the Seal of Bilinguality, and we have, over the past several years of, of offering it here in BVSD, really worked to increase the equity and continue to, need to do more of that. But one of the things that we have deviated slightly with, it used to be that the original legislate, the legislation said English, GPA, and a high-level score on an IBAP SAT. We took that and, and we created an or here in BVSD. We also, for the World Language, elevated a bit what the state was asking. They were asking for students to have completed a Level Four class. We would like it to be a Level Five class because of the higher expectations. And the other thing that we have done over the past couple of years is engaged in a partnership with Avant, which is a, an assessment company that administers a language proficiency assessment called the STAMP IVS. It measures speaking, listening, reading, and writing, and it costs $19. It's a great deal, and we have used it also to qualify students who may not have taken the full coursework here in Boulder Valley, which has really served our heritage speakers of languages. And we've actually even been able to offer the SEAL in languages that we don't even teach here in, in Boulder Valley. And so, yes, we're continuing to work on increasing the equity and realize that those are issues, and the STAMP is in one way that we have done that, so that students don't have to take the five years and score on the STAMP. They could just score on the STAMP.
That's really encouraging, and it's also encouraging to hear that we can do it in other languages that we may not be teaching, because I think that's the idea in kind of our multicultural world, that we be able to honor that bilinguality or triliteracy or whatever the students come to the table with. Kitty?
Which makes me think that, you know, we're talking all about bilingual education and, and being bilingual in English and Spanish, but I know that there are dozens of other languages that kids bring with them. And so is anything going to be changing for ELD for students who, who come from, say, Europe or Asia? Are we going to be helping them in their native language as well to, to keep that boosted, or, or what are we doing?
Well, we, some of our schools who have multiple languages will also engage in similar co-teaching model, because that is the English language development model. We don't have other dual language programs in our system where we're, you know, you, I think our top three languages, Kristin told me today, are Spanish, Chinese, Nepali, Japanese. So we currently do not have other dual language pathways with other languages other than Spanish. However, our schools that have multiple languages will fall into this co-teaching model for English language development services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Were you going to say something?
I was also just going to say, you know, when there are those opportunities and you have community members that speak those languages and students that are, are needing to connect, we absolutely are capitalizing on those, really, again, to elevate the, that notion of bilingualism and maintaining any language that you bring with you here into our system. And so thinking about, while there's not the formalized pathway of the dual language, simply because the Spanish numbers are so much larger than, than the others, really thinking about though, capitalizing on, using community members and, and enriching our students, and thinking about what kinds of after-school enrichment activities might we be able to, to offer to students, I think are, are also important. I was a principal and offered Chinese after school, because I had some students who were from China, and it felt really important to, to value that for them. So things like that, I think we, we continue to look for and to value.
I just want to thank our team once again, Nativity and Kristin, who's been working on this so diligently for so many years, and just really proud of the work we're doing, and very excited for the future of bilingual education, CLDE in BVSD, aligned to our strategic plan. I just think this is a really exciting presentation and really excited for the work ahead, so just wanted to say thank you.
So is there a cert, I should know the answer to this, but I don't. Is there a certification that teachers can get for this, and are we helping teachers achieve that? Or is the, do you get that through the code? I mean, how does that work so that we can have more teachers that are certified in this? I'm just wondering how that process works.
Yeah, our number wasn't in there. We have 305 teachers that have their CLDE endorsement, so that is an additional endorsement that teachers can get from a university. I know many of our teachers partner with the Bueno Center to get their CLDE endorsement, but that is definitely something that we could look at in terms of increasing our numbers of CLDE-endorsed staff, specifically in our schools with high numbers of emerging bilinguals, I think is really essential.
So that's something we could think about going forward, is how we can support more teachers getting that endorsement. Is it something you can do while you're working, or is it something that you probably need to do over a summer because it's intensive? I don't.
I think most of us did it while we were working. It's, I don't know.
And there are cohorts. We, Boulder Valley does, has run cohorts. I don't know that we have a cohort right this moment running, but through our professional learning, we've run cohorts annually through the Bueno Center partnering, and, and so they do it in the evenings, after-school weekends over the summer.
It's great to know. It's nice to have those kind of partnerships in your backyard. All right.
Just one last comment.
Go ahead, Richard.
Again, I, I also want to thank you very much for your hard work, and, and, and once this is all said and done, and everything is all installed, and we're on our way, again, Boulder Valley School District will be a model for the nation. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any, any last thoughts? All right. Dr. Anderson, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. This was really helpful and informative, and we look forward to our partnership going forward. So I think we're in recess for 15 minutes. Rob, is that right? Laura, is that right? Okay.